Good evening. Welcome to the Pullman City Council meeting. This is a workshop session tonight on Tuesday, January 17th. And Mike, I guess I'm gonna give you the honor of taking role.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Benjamin.
Present.
Councilmember Dubin.
Here.
Councilmember Guido.
Here.
Councilmember McCall.
Here.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Weller.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
All right, on the agenda tonight is a discussion. And the first thing on the line is boards, commissions, and committee assignments. And this is for the council to figure out who's gonna represent what. Dee has sent you a list of who's on what, who's on first, who's on third.
Thank you.
And so you have that list, and then you see where we need the Audit Committee, and Firefighter Reserve Office, those kind of things. So at this point, usually we just turn it over to the council, and whoever, you can do your own discussion and see what you'd like, and go from there. And Nathan, you're raising your hand first, so off you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to tell the council, I appreciate you waiting for this. I know I was sick last time. I didn't want to get anybody else sick, so greatly appreciate that. I think, you know, now for the last about three years, I've advocated for all of us sitting on our committee assignments to kind of move things around, not only for the benefit of those committees, bringing in new ideas, different views, but also for the benefit of all of us as representatives, being able to understand the different committees. Having been on a little bit of the council, I've had the pleasure and opportunity to serve on a few of these. And I know I had served on several, and when Councilmember Parks came on, I said, "How about the library?" And, you know, she's been a great asset. RTPO, I was on there, and, you know. So I feel it's important for all of us to kind of look at these things and see where we can put our energy. I've sat on One Palouse, formerly Palouse Knowledge Corridor, for a while now. It's changed its makeup. I would love to hear Councilmember Benjamin's viewpoint on, since he is sitting on the Executive Board, part of that, his views on how to move forward with that. Because currently, we don't have a city seat on there, other than Frances. Other than that, as I mentioned last year, and discussed with Eileen, and I just talked to her before the meeting, I'd love to serve on Palouse Basin Aquifer, given the history, my education. I did sit on a few of those meetings. Didn't make all of them, as you had suggested last year. And did take your advice and do that, sit into those meetings. So I am asking for that, and that's one. But I just wanted to make a few comments beforehand, so.
Since this is a council-type session, why don't you just take it over? I'm not gonna call people out, just when you... Unless it gets unruly, and then I will, okay? But at the meantime, whoever wants to speak, just go ahead, and yes.
I'm sorry, it just occurred to me that there's some information that was neglected from this agenda item. The CIP and TIP Committee, remember, we moved that process up so we could remain in line with TIP, with RCW. And there has been some dates set already, so I wanted to at least make the council aware that if you wanted to volunteer for the CIP Committee, that the 10th of May has been designated for that committee's meeting date. So if you're in town or not, I wanted to at least make everybody aware.
Well, I'm not gonna be giving up willingly, giving up P-Back. It's a unique committee in that we work with, you know, the regional scientists, and there's a ton of research that goes into this. It's not, it's, and real, you know, I mean, it's, yeah, it's a very unique committee, and you need to have that background in there. You have to work with the engineers. And I've been very, very pleased with the way that's all worked out. I feel like I've got a ton invested in that. We are at a very critical stage in the P-Back process with the water alternatives rollout coming in May, which is very, very important, and I definitely want to be a part of that. I've worked very hard on it for the past three or four years, and I really, really want to be a part of that. And I want to be on the committee and not just ancillary to the committee when that rollout happens in May.
I can appreciate that. I feel the same way about the Library Board. I'm very involved, I'm very comfortable in it, I really enjoy it. I've learned a lot. However, if a newer or a different council member said to me, "I'd really like to check that out," like I did to Nathan, then I would say, "Go ahead." And we all have expertise, we all have involvement in these, but you can't stay on something forever, as people, other people want to, is my opinion. So my two committees are open to whomever is interested, and I'm open to doing any of them as well. So that's my feedback at this time.
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember McCall in that the P-Back is a very special kind of committee, but to me, that's the reason to make sure that we all serve on it at some point. I think the expertise that we each have in the areas, well, that I'm gaining as a one-year council member, and that others have are critical. And I think we all need to be conversing in it. My experience of the past year has been that every committee is a lot of work, and that the way that we can contribute to some of these issues is not just serving on the committees. Like, there's a lot of ways to do this. And so I would support Nathan Weller's serving on P-Back, in part because I would hope in a couple of years that I would get a turn as well. And then the two committees I'm on right now, the Audit Committee and the LTAC. LTAC is not on here, it's not up. But the Audit Committee is really informative. I've just learned a ton. I'm very happy keeping it. I'd be very happy to give it up. And I'm also looking for something a little mid-sized, too, to pick up. Maybe SWEATA, maybe the RTPO, something along those. If, I see those are both Councilmember Guido's. I'm not here to snatch things away from anybody who's interested, but that's kind of where I'm coming in at.
Is there only one spot available on P-Back? Oh, sorry. Is there only one spot available on P-Back?
There is.
Council position, but there is staff.
Right, right. Council position, one spot, there is staff assigned to P-Back.
I feel like we're in this white elephant exchange, where you open the package, then somebody steals it. It's kind of the feeling of this. I know we started this part of the discussion a year ago, the last time we addressed this, and there was the question of, "Do we want experience, or do we want experts?" Was the conversation. And at that time, the council had said that they felt it was more important... In general, the council had said that they thought it was more important that there was opportunity for people to get experience on committees as opposed to just one person becoming the expert, and the rest of the council not gaining that knowledge in order for the rest of the council members to not make the wise decisions. And so, you know, one thing we could do is, is it worth the discussion of, are there any specific time limits that we'd like to do a rotation on, that if someone's been on account, been on a specific committee for a certain period of time, does it just lend itself to know that the next year that person would move to something different? And so I'm interested in thoughts that way. This is difficult, because I know Eileen is very passionate, and rightly so. She's invested a lot in this. And how do we balance that with the increase in the knowledge of the whole council? And part of it, I think, would also be helpful is if, and this isn't something that has happened very often, but if we have people that are assigned to specific committees, I feel there should at least be a report each year from that council member in order to help inform the rest of the council of what they're learning.
We're posting a number of years, two?
We, I mean, last year, we had talked about two, but I think people need, I'm not set on two. I'm just saying, that was kind of where the discussion had kind of ended last year. And so I'm just kind of open to what other people's thoughts are on this.
So I would agree with Councilmember Benjamin. As far as the idea of a rotation, I think that's something we should explore. As a newbie, I would say it definitely takes a year or two to get up to speed on the council that you're on. And I know I feel that way about the DPA. In light of the fact that we're going into this major project, I would like to continue on the DPA Board. I'm also serving as an officer, but that doesn't mean I can't still do that. As far, I may have been a little overzealous in my participation as a newbie, and I wouldn't mind giving up some of my seats on some of the either RTPO, or SWEATA, or LEP. But for continuity purposes, which I do understand what Eileen is saying, there is something to be said for that, as far as understanding things and becoming more knowledgeable.
If it weren't for the major rollout of this huge project that P-Back has been preparing for several years, I would feel differently about it, because it isn't important. It's very important to our region. Anybody see the news tonight about what's going on in Scottsdale? It is critical. Like I say, it would be as if, you know, the way Megan feels about the downtown project, this is the way I feel about this rollout of the P-Back water alternatives. This is something that we've been ramping up for, for years and years. And I've been a big part of it. I've been out the fairgrounds doing the surveys. I've pounded the pavement on this, and I want to be there when we roll it out, as a member of P-Back.
When do you anticipate the rollout?
We're talking about May.
When you say the rollout, what all does that entail?
There's gonna be a media blitz, there's gonna be community surveys, there's gonna be a whole bunch more community meetings, explaining the four water alternatives and the one that P-Back has chosen. And there's a lot of moving parts even within that. It's gonna have to be a lot of explanation, people who know it inside and out, that have built it, have been one of the builders, or one of the architects of this. And to be able to explain to the community about what the costs are gonna be, what the challenges are gonna be, what it means to the community. I mean, whiskey's for drinking and water's for fighting. I mean, that's what Mark Schessler always says, and that's so true. And I want to be there. This is so, so important, and we've been working on this project. There's been a ton of, city money has gone into it. What is it, $40,000 a year that we put into this? And, yeah, I'm heavily invested in this. A year from now, I would feel completely different, but this is very, very important.
So, if I may, that's exactly, and I'm not trying to ruffle feathers, but I am going to bring up, that's exactly what was said last year.
And it was the same calendar last year, too. I'm not saying that it was the same calendar.
I'm just letting you know, that was what was said last year. And I took a step back, and I said, "I understand." And you had explained, "How about you attend a few meetings and get up to snuff?" I said, "I understand," and I did.
You came to two meetings.
I did come to the meetings, yes. And I had Poverty Awareness Task Force going on at the same time, which I ended up switching around to attend Palouse Basin Aquifer. I actually switched the PAT meeting around, just so that I could attend P-Back. Now, take a deep breath, let it out. Now, I understand we all love our committees, all right? I loved the Library Board, loved it, you know? I loved CIP until, you know, I decided to give it up. But that's exactly what we need to do. We have a lot of, we feel like we have so much ownership over these committees, which is important, but it also narrows our vision so that we don't see more than just those committees. And we don't see the benefit of other views. Now, the reason I was so amped on P-Back is because my education is directly in line with bioregional planning. That's my master's degree. So...
Are we playing dueling resumes here now?
What I'm saying is, that is why, that this is so important. And I have followed what you have suggested, and I did. Now, you wanting to stay on, it's fine, it's not worth... I've got to think about where, what hill do I want to die on? It's not worth me dying on that hill, so.
Well, can we, maybe, since you've claimed to be saying the argument, put an expiration date on this, then, for next year? Eileen has agreed that she will go off as of next year, and then you have a chance to go on, so at least we could move this thing along?
Yes, absolutely.
With all due respect, Mayor, I do recall that we had that agreement last year. And so I would like some kind of assurance. I'm troubled that we would suggest, as a council, that members have to attend all of the meetings of any board that we're interested in, in addition to doing all of our own work, all of our own boards and committees, before we could be considered for serving on that. I don't think that's a wise move. And I'm, of course, amenable. It's not me serving on P-Back, for example, but for one of the ones that I am interested in, I think it's a critically important committee, just beyond. And that we have one member who's an expert and don't have a general experience on that committee. I'm concerned by that. If you're mayor suggesting that we will revisit this in a year, of course, I'll be amenable to that, but I am concerned.
I just have to say that there's an ebb and flow to things, too. And I remember a few years ago, we had to beg people to be on P-Back.
Yeah, I think I took over from you.
You did.
Yeah.
You did. And so, I mean, there is that, and I understand that you have, you know, a vested interest in that, and it's important to see things through to fruition. And I think that's why it is a good idea to have some limits and to at least identify maybe what we need to be doing with some of these committees, as I kind of suggested last year with, when two of you were interested in DPA, that we identify maybe an alternate member on some of these committees that are more involved, where there's more, I won't say skilled, but there's more learning, there's a timeframe in which to become more familiar with what's going on. And as an alternate, you could do that, and then be able to just slip right in to the position when it does finally vacate. Just a thought, and I don't know if that was maybe what you were trying to do with having Nathan attend some of the meetings, but...
I didn't suggest that anybody attend anything. I have just stated again and again that P-Back is absolutely open to anybody to attend. I mean, we even have a special place on our agenda every month for guests to speak. We are on Zoom, and we are also, we're hybrid in-person, and it works. Sometimes we have 18, 19 people in on those meetings.
But again, just a thought, that maybe with some of these higher-level committees, that there, that we do identify an alternate, and then that takes care of the rotation, at least, for that. Just a thought. I'm happy to stay on LEP Board, unless anyone else is dying to pick that up. That would be fine. Megan and I both serve, and it's maybe a five-to-10-minute commitment at best, or at worst, one or the other, once a month. But as I say, I'm happy to continue with that. LTAC, we're ordinancesed in on our terms, so that's why there wasn't any identification on here for new membership. I'd be happy to take something off Megan's hands. I noticed when I was going through this, holy cow. She just kind of stepped up for about everything. Way to go, way to learn, but there's a point at which you just get spread too thin, and that maybe isn't the best. Anyway, I'm open to what anybody would like to do with me.
I would be interested in doing the Audit Committee, again, if either of you don't want to. But again, I don't have to, but that's one that I really did enjoy. And any of the other ones, I would be open to as well.
I am so, I am so impressed with you and Audit Committee. That used to be a trial by fire, to come onto the council.
Oh, my God.
You would have to do at least a year on Audit Committee. That was...
If you were new.
And it was a great idea. I remember Mayor Johnson was saying, told us, you know, in order to understand, understand everything, go through it, so.
You get to tell the residents that the City of Pullman is the City of Pullman's biggest consumer, because we buy locally from nuts and bolts at PBS to police squad cars from Jess Ford, and everything in between. And it's, it really does, I just enjoyed it. It's kind of nerdy fun, and I liked it. But if somebody else wants to, or needs, wants to learn, or whatever, I see to that as well.
Frances, I'd like to hear your opinion with the One Palouse. I know that's been a discussion. So on One Palouse, and One Palouse went through a process just at the start of the pandemic, where it transitioned from Palouse Knowledge Corridor, to One Palouse. And in the process, there was a bylaws change, of which I was there, Nathan was there, when this bylaw change happened, where it moved from a board where everybody was seated at the board to a, you individuals came into one area, and then you had a board that was elected. And so there's two positions that are appointed at the One Palouse, which is the WSU and U of I, but the rest are all elected from the group. And nobody from Pullman was elected up, and I don't even remember if you put your name if you ran. I can't remember that part of it, of which that would be coming up again in the next year for the next election for positions. The one thing that, if we're looking at strategically, I think a deeper question is, how does Pullman want to affect economic development of the region? And is One Palouse, I mean, we're involved in SWEATA because we want to have impact into it. Transportation's important to us, so we're involved in the RTPO. And that's the question with One Palouse. And there's some changes going on, and so, and I know, Nathan, you've had some frustrations this year. I don't have a problem if we take a step back and not have a seat at the table while the reorganization, while this process is in place right now, and then come back at a later time. It's not being at, and not being at the board level is, I think, was a little frustrating for you, but the boards are elected by the group at the level that the City of Pullman is at. And so it's a little different, it's a different dynamic than the other positions that we're looking at in that way. And so that's where, you know, if the city wanted to take a step off and use that as leverage to, if they want us back on, or if we want to move back on to work to try to get that board position, we could at that time. So as a matter of clarity, what Councilmember Benjamin is discussing, frustration less, disappointment more with the reorganization. We did have a position on Palouse Knowledge Corridor, both, actually, Frances brought me in 13-some years ago, when Palouse Knowledge Corridor was first forming up. And we had several business showcases, so on and so forth. Now with One Palouse, it's a, and correct me if I misunderstand, pay-to-play type of situation. And so we don't get named in their affiliates unless we're paying a certain amount. And I know that they're having some challenges with City of Moscow as well, because I think Gina Terusio was, they were talking to her about, "How do we get the City of Moscow involved also?" Meanwhile, I'm kind of knocking at the front door, saying, "Hey, we want to be involved." And as far as the elections to that board, from my understanding, it was only the people who paid a certain amount who could actually serve on that Executive Board. Am I incorrect? That's incorrect. The bylaws are written in a pay-to-play, but within the rules, there's no dollar amount that's set at this time. So everybody, so it's working toward the pay-to-play, but they did not set an amount. So the City of Pullman and the City of Moscow all met the threshold. Okay. I just, it's somewhat, it's... Zero right now. It's somewhat disappointing, since right now, the counties and the port are involved at the executive, where they attend the weekly, or the monthly meetings. The general, which includes myself, well, City of Pullman, Chamber, and a few others, attend the quarterly, that's open for the quarterly. We're not allowed into the monthly executive. And I've heard from other people that, questions about, "How much is this actually serving the cities?" Especially since we're the major economic contributors. Now, if you feel it's still worth it to go, I trust your opinion. I have asked French to come and give a, Executive Director, to give a presentation to the City Council. He hasn't done that. I talked to him three months ago. And it's, yeah, next month, so. I would, related to that, I'd go back to, what is City of Pullman's long-term strategy? Do we want to be at the table as it relates to economic development within our region? If so, then what's our strategy to be at the table? And strategy-wise, it could be, you stay in and work to get elected, or it could be that you step away and ask for them to assign a seat. I mean, it's, so it's, I'm fine either way, and if we don't have someone to sit on it, then we don't have someone to sit on it.
I just have a question. I just went to their website to get some clarification, and it does not mention the cities. But wouldn't, couldn't the council representative on SWEATA attend as the, or do they, as part of SWEATA? Or, no, who from SWEATA, I guess, is on the board of One Palouse? Or are they not?
Who from, I don't know, I don't know all the people that are on SWEATA. I know that from the county, Tom Handy is, represents to both, and he's at the exec within SWEATA, and he's also on the board within One Palouse. So he's worked his way into both of those. And previously, he wasn't on, and then, and SWEATA did a bylaw change in order for him to be on. There was a scenario that happened where, because of how the elections ran, there was nobody from Whitman County that was actually at that level. And so they did a bylaw change in order to, and what they did is they made, their bylaw change was one where this is the set size of the board... bylaw change was one where this is the set size of the board and then the board will increase if there is not a representative from the county in order, so they can have a seat there regardless, you know, so it, it, it could increase a couple times to fill those counties, to make sure there's representation from each county with how SWEATA structure is and then decrease again as things change.
Okay, thank you.
Nathan, was your question, should we continue to serve on that? Have we come to any decision on that?
I guess it's so, it's such a gray area. It's kind of convoluted right now. It, it seems like it's a longer discussion that isn't appropriate for right now. I think stay the course and then we'll, you know, I, I, I can continue to serve since I know the history or I can give it up. It's, you know, either way.
Maybe there's a time that we can have a discussion at a later date, both with SWEATA and the importance of SWEATA and One Palouse. So the council can hear presentations from both.
That would be great.
Because SWEATA has been off and on and mostly off for a while.
Yeah.
And do we still want to be active on that? We have our own Economic Development Director now. We didn't have that before and SWEATA didn't step up. And one time the county was giving money and most of the push was towards the county's things as opposed to city. So I think maybe we could have a discussion at a later day.
Good idea.
Talking about the importance of SWEATA and talking about One Palouse and see how they all fit.
Good idea.
Along with our Economic Development Director.
Yeah. Yeah. I think it's a great idea. As the representative on SWEATA, I can say that there was a lot of transition, new directors, at least I think two. We have a new director who is definitely feeling her way and I think the mayor is right on point. It's time for that discussion and do we need to be on all of those and especially in light of the economic development position that's within the city.
Great.
And I would, within that, I'd like to full in this, this larger conversation of what do we want economic, what do we want Pullman's role in economic development to be in our region? And, and how, how do we best achieve that? Whether it's, whether it's just through, you know, our position or whether it's through all these other committees or is it, or is it something different?
Could we maybe go for some low hanging fruit? We've been talking for about half an hour. Maybe we could, how about the Audit Committee? I think, I don't want to speak for you, Councilmember Benjamin, but I believe we're both flexible on serving on that. I've learned a lot, would love to continue to serve, but if Councilmember Parks has already said she'd like to, is there anyone else who would like to serve on that? Then if you don't mind, because I am newer and I'm learning so much, I would love to stay on with Councilmember Parks. Great.
Nathan and I did it for two years, so that's.
I'm learning a lot. All right, decision made. All right.
Hey, we got one done.
And I, and you want to continue with, because there was an offer around.
You have your mic on?
I'm sorry.
There was an offer around SWEATA and our PTO.
Yeah, I'm not sure, is there one of those that, you, you've served on both of those? Megan, is there one you would suggest or one that you're like, take this one? I'm flexible.
Just don't forget, transportation is involved with SWEATA and RTPO.
Yep, thank you.
We're not meeting Pullman, just remember that.
Thank you.
Do they meet back to back, I mean, do they meet on the same day in the same location?
They used to. I don't know if they do.
Cause they're in the four different counties and one meets on Tuesdays at nine and the other meets Tuesdays at 10:15.
Yeah, that wasn't an issue. I don't remember it being an issue too much. I mostly met on Zoom. I did not go to their meetings in person.
Is there one that you would like to release? Is there one you would recommend? I would be happy to take that on.
Either one.
I think I'd love to learn a little bit more about SWEATA then.
Okay. Tuesdays.
This way we can see if it's on or off.
Yeah.
I would love to learn a little bit more about LEF. I've seen that for a while and I'm not sure if either.
You got it.
Okay. Great, thanks.
Unless Megan would like.
Oh. You were quick.
It's okay.
Either one. That's fine. I can stay on that.
Thank you.
If someone does have an interest in the RTPO.
I'm also fine with that one as well.
I haven't ever served on CIP. Is that one open or no?
It, it is open. There's just that fixed date of May 10th where there's scheduled to meet.
Okay. I'd throw my hat in the ring for that one.
I know I'm still, you've been on longer than I have Nathan. I'm still, I mean, I'm enjoying learning right now and I'd like to stay on CIP if I could.
I think it's only fair if we trade. Yeah, there we go.
Okay, so Pat and Francis on CIP?
And then I'd also mention on here, although it's not listed, Megan, Francis and myself are on the work group for the strategic tourism plan. And that does take a fair amount of time and, and commitment and that's not listed here. So.
Yeah.
Just throwing that out for the good of the order.
I, I would be happy to do RTPO if you don't, or somebody mentioned, did you offer that?
That'd be great.
Yeah, I've never done it, so I'd try it.
Okay.
Did you want to continue with the library board?
Unless, if, if nobody else wants it, yes. But if somebody would like it, that's fine. That's good too.
It's an awesome group.
I would love next year. I think I'm kind of full, but.
I'm only have one right now. Library would interest me, but, but I'm also open. Are there others that people would like to? If, if there's something that someone would like to give up to.
I mean, can you talk a little bit about the Whitman County Solid Waste Advisory Committee?
The, we meet quarterly. We've amended our structure and we meet quarterly. We are hoping to, well, then when the courthouse was under construction in Colfax, we were meeting somewhat over email almost because there was just no place for us to meet. It's important in that, well, unfortunately with, with what happened, the situation in China with National Sword, we, all of our recycling basically went, went down the drain and we're hoping to sort of, now that we're back meeting again quarterly regularly, we're hoping to look again at our recycling. We've been talking about a mini MRF and trying to find a, trying to find some funding for that. The county's really hot on the idea, but there's always money when you talk about the county. It's always a challenge. So we'd like to get that going. The capital improvements that have been done out at the transfer station are astounding. And we're probably due or overdue for, to have the guys come in and have Dave Nails or, or Mark come in and give an update on that. It is a, it's a model facility for this part of a, for this size of a community and the, and the region that it serves. It's, it's an amazing group of people. And I'm excited. We've sort of been on hiatus with a lot of this and I'm really interested in, you know, if you want, if that's, you know, because recycling and sustainability is, you know, that goes along with my love of the Water Committee too. But we're hoping for some changes here in the, in this next coming year and hoping to find those recycling outlets that we can sell commodity to. It's just been grim since China changed their, changed their situation and nobody really knows what's going on with them and you know what the political situation is there in those faraway lands. So it's a, it's more of a moving part than it, that it might look like. But yeah, I suppose that, you know, if we're going to get down and dirty about this, well, I guess, you know, you want me to give up everything, I guess I'll give up this one.
I don't, I don't think that's what we're doing right now is choosing which ones we give up. I think we're just looking at what committees are out there and what we still need to decide on. We have, I think so far, we have decided on, like, stop me when I go wrong. We have CIP that's decided. The Finance Committee is Ann and me, I think. Is that right? The LEF Board.
Yes.
We've got that. Library Board.
I was a little confused, but yes?
Yeah, I will, yes.
Okay, yes.
What, what's yes? Who's on Library Board? I'm sorry, I missed.
Anne.
To Anne, Anne Stain on it.
And SWEATA.
And SWEATA, I'm on SWEATA. What, what do we have left, I guess is what I'm.
So, yeah, and, and RTPO. So what you have left is the Board of Volunteer Firefighters, the Whitman County Solid Waste, Palouse Basin Aquifer has been discussed but not committed, and the Downtown Pullman Association. And I'm, haven't heard any final decision on One Palouse from what I can tell.
I will say that the Board for Volunteer Firefighters and Reserve Officers, it, it's, I mean, I think we actually met one time.
And usually we can do it within a amount of minutes.
You and I and Dee on the phone during COVID.
It's important when we eventually get there.
Well, it is.
It depends on when, when bills come in and that's when we have to take action.
Right. Anyway, it's, it's not a very heavy lift at all if someone's, you know, and I'm happy to stay on it, but I'm also happy if somebody wants to, anyway.
So just for clarification to Anne, I have you on the Audit Committee,
RTPO.
RTPO and the Library Board.
Yeah.
Okay.
And my understanding with the Palouse Knowledge Corridor is that Nathan, you had agreed to stay on that until we have a later discussion?
If you, if you would like to, it's not a, you know.
No, I'm, I'm really, I'm good and full.
Oh, okay.
I'm not looking to figure out. I'm just trying to figure out where we are in the, in the process.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, unless somebody else, I can always continue. Francis, I'm not sure.
Do, do you want from me to?
I mean, it almost makes sense since you're already on the executive. I don't know how that works with the whole.
It, I think it'd work, I think it'd work fine. So how about if I take it, take it back over? I mean, I was on it. Before, I was on it before you, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. So how about if I take One Palouse?
It almost sounds like it's bylaws on the fly from what I've been hearing from your discussion.
Oh.
Who's going to do this? Are we going to get this person?
Yeah. It's, you know.
I'm just saying.
How, how, how does that work with the makeup? Francis, how about we wait and before we, we switch things and have that discussion with, before we make a whole bunch of, it seems so gray right now.
Not a problem.
Before we switch that, you know, I would be very interested, Anne, in the Volunteer Fighters, firefighters, if that's okay.
You have to be on time.
Okay.
Just want to make sure it's very clear.
10, 10 minutes early. All right.
Five minutes early is good enough.
10 minutes early, since I've been working with the veterans recently, I, I understand.
We end quickly.
I understand.
In fairness, my whole time, this was out over COVID, so I don't think we ever met in person when we did meet. We did it on the phone. I was at.
Yeah, we did. I think we'll do most of them on Zoom.
On Zoom, yeah, so.
And I might mention LEF is the same way.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
So point of clarification, did, what, we took a real quick turn on that One Palouse, so it's not going to be Francis. You're going to stay.
Let's just keep it right now.
For the time being.
Keep, keep it with myself serving. Francis is already on the executive. It's so gray right now. I'm not sure how exactly, and maybe Francis and I can talk at another time. Okay.
But you will, you will step in for Councilmember Parks on the Board of Volunteer Firefighters?
Yeah, and I will be on time, Ms. May.
Okay. All right. So that leaves.
I think Megan expressed wanting to remain on DPA if that's amenable to all the council members.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And, okay.
Is anybody feeling overwhelmed with any of their assignments? Cause I only have one. But if people really want them, that's fine. Other than the strategic tourism, which isn't on here.
Cause that's a work group.
It's a work group.
So.
Francis, you can have the LEF.
We already have.
Not LEF Board.
Okay.
What, what's left, Mike?
So if we can go over P back really quick, is, so that will be Councilmember McCall for another season?
Yes.
Okay, so then.
Within the minutes. The fact that she said she would agree to the end of this year.
I will make sure that the.
I think that would take care of the conversation.
Okay. So the only one I have left then according to this is the Solid Waste Advisory Committee and I can go over assignments for clarification before or after that.
I'd be happy to stay on that as well.
I didn't hear anybody step up for it.
No.
I just can't.
Okay, so this is what I have based on the discussion. If I got something wrong, please correct me. Starting at the top, the Audit Committee will be Councilmembers Parks and Dubin, the Board of Volunteer Firefighters, Weller, Law Enforcement, the LEF Board, Weller and Guido, SWEATA, Dubin, RTPO, Parks, Solid Waste, McCall, Palouse Basin Aquifer, McCall, DPA, Guido, Library Board, Parks, One Palouse, Weller, and CIP, Wright and Benjamin.
And then did you, did you want to just stay then or with the LEF?
It's up to you. I would be okay if you wanted to take it, but.
I'm, I'm happy, I'm happy taking over the LEF then.
Okay, thank you.
I've, I've done it before, so I, I know.
Listen, you too.
I'm just more, I, I, I want to, if, if anybody wanted to give stuff up, I'm happy to.
Okay, so Weller and Benjamin. Got it.
Thank you, Francis.
Okay. Got agreement there. AWC City Action Days and discussion and preparation and all the other things that go along with that. So are you, you want to go over the accommodations first and then we'll go and talk about what's on our agenda as far as our legislative priorities, which we've already agreed to?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. This agenda item appears on the request of several council members during my one-on-ones, my usual monthly one-on-ones to put everybody in the room together and talk about a strategy or any other things that may need to happen between now and when we head off to Olympia on the Tuesday, the 14th. You'll notice in your agenda packet, there is the calendar and this calendar is subject to change. I did, I have not checked it this week as to what the events are that are going on, on the 15th and the 16th. I've also included your legislative priorities as adopted. And so we can work, I can get some direction on focus areas to make appointments other than with our three representatives, Schmick, Dye and Schessler. I did take the opportunity based on these eight items and how they were presented. It seems there was a lot of transportation heavy items. So once the rosters were posted, I pulled those and started doing some research into who's on the Transportation Committee for both the House and the Senate, see if we had any connections there with anybody for anything other than just regionality. I will say this, our three, our delegation is not. Schessler, Schmick or Dye are not on this. So there's an opportunity to hit a few people if you wanted me to call and start making appointments with them as well, but I'm, I'm kind of, I want to make sure.
The most important appointment right now is just with Schessler and he has a, has a new legislative aide because Krista's retired. That we get something booked on, are most of you coming over on Tuesday? Okay, so we need to have something booked on Wednesday. Anytime during that schedule, with the exception of when the governor talks to everybody, is what we've done in the past. So we know we can escape, leave this, go over and meet with our legislators and do it. Wednesday is probably the best if we can.
Yeah.
And we've sometimes have been there at five o'clock in the evening and met in, in Mark's office and then the other legislators came. One time we met with Joe and Mary separately. Mary was doing the broadband and Verizon and 5G at that time, if I remember correctly and all those things. But usually since Mark has the seniority on it, we've been able to put them all in his office or something like that, or a meeting room. And it'd be best if we could do it on Wednesday.
Sure. And we'll make that call. When I return to work on Thursday, I'll make that my first priority to get it on Wednesday and I'll try to avoid booking one to 1:30 on Wednesday for anybody for the governor's fireside chat.
The other thing that usually happens and the mayor of Fairfield, Mickey Harnoy usually puts a dinner together for the ninth district legislators. usually puts a dinner together for the ninth district legislators and.
Usually it's Wednesday evenings, something like that.
Council members, so I don't know if that's something that we want to try to get in touch with her.
We've been calling around trying to figure out who scheduled that, so I'll put Stephanie on that.
Okay, as I say, it's, I think it's Mickey, right?
Mickey Harnoye.
And that's usually Wednesday night.
Last time I talked to her, which was a couple of weeks ago, I think she was still planning to do it, so.
Well, and I talked to her in November, we were, happened to be at the same event together, and she was talking about doing it then, so.
So I have a question, not having ever attended this, I guess I'm back to what Mike said as far as our legislative priorities seem to be on the transportation side, kind of transportation-heavy. So how does that work? Do we, does it make sense to try and meet with other legislators who are on the Transportation Committee? And I'm looking at you, Mayor Johnson, if you could help.
You're a lower priority if you're not in their own district, that's number one.
Right.
And so usually you have your own legislators carry the ball.
Okay.
Now, if they want to set up something on your behalf to set one of their colleagues or somebody from Transportation to meet with us, sometimes that works really well, too.
Okay, okay.
And, and related to that, one of our, one of our items that we have on our legislative agenda has to do with the rail banking. And I've, through the fall, I worked with our legislators and also with John Schneider, who is the Senior Policy Advisor for Outdoor Recreation and Economic Development from the Governor's Office. And with his work, I was able to get in the Governor's proposed transportation budget, a proviso for rail banking, all of the rail within the Pullman city limits. And so that's in the Governor's proposed budget, the next step is how do we get it into both the House and the Senate budgets, and so that's our next, the next step. And I've worked collaboratively with Pullman Civic Trust, they've been very instrumental in this piece in, in helping to set up these meetings and these coordinations, and they're, they're actually meeting tonight in order for their next strategies on this next step. But we're going to want to work to get in front of any of the Transportation Committee Chairs or leadership for the House and the Senate if possible, just to let them know we, we want, you know, and, and the one item would be, this is the proviso that was in the Governor's proposed budget, we very much support this, we'd like to be able to see this advance. So that's, so that's one, you know, because we're only, if we get in, it would be a very short and narrow thing, but it's, it's going to be worth, even if, even if we don't have a meeting, to have somebody that goes to each of their offices and drops off the proviso language and saying, you know, from the city of Pullman, we definitely support this and want you to know that we support it.
So is that something you're doing? Is that something that you would be doing then?
Well, I would coordinate, I mean, Mike's been coordinating the meetings, and Mike's been looking at those that are on the Transportation Committee. Pullman Civic Trust is looking tonight also at those lists to see if there's any, any that they know that they could work to get us in front of for meetings also.
Okay.
But, but it's a big deal that we, we're in the Governor's budget that is for the proviso, and now it's just working the House and the Senate to get into their budgets.
Yeah, well, congratulations for doing that. I, I guess it would work the same way in terms of housing and, I mean, I assume, based on what I've been hearing coming out of the Department of Commerce, and RJ has been sharing some information with me related to middle housing, that one of the proposals is to define what middle housing is as part of an overall package around housing. Is that just something that we're going to be listening to? I guess I, I'm feeling very ignorant as far as the process, is this just more a listening session for us to see the inner workings, and then we try and meet with our representatives? Is that essentially what we can expect?
Yes, but also, I mean, the housing, just like the AWC has housing in there. There's going to be so many varieties of housing going through, probably by every week, when somebody adds something to it. So it's, one is to monitor what AWC sends out every week. There's also an AWC briefing twelve thirty on Fridays where they can give you updates, too, that you can sign up for. If you want to just monitor housing, that's one, but housing is going to be all over the place, because there are so many different needs for housing. Governor's budget has it, and there's some other places. I was just at the trustees meeting of the Community College of Spokane, and the governor has put the North-South Freeway on a pause for like six years, when they've got disruption throughout the north part of Spokane, and everyone is just unglued because of that, and plus our Spokane Community College campus has been disrupted by all that. So I know that the Democratic leadership, fortunately, comes from Spokane, so I know there's going to be some real issues there to get that six-year thing paused, so when that happens, guess what happens to the other parts of the budget?
And thank you for indulging me, it's also just, I've been struggling a little bit with participation in this when there's also a strategic planning meeting for the downtown. One of the days that I would be gone, so I'm just trying to figure out what, you know, the value versus, is it important for me to be here for that DPA? Or Downtown Steering Committee is what I'm trying to say, the Downtown Steering Committee. So I just wanted a little bit more information in terms of, do we get any direct time with people, or is it mostly just an educational process?
It's both, I think, what?
We usually get fifteen minutes, fifteen minutes in Mark's office, maybe fifteen with Joe and Mary. Sometimes together, I've done a lot of hallway work where you get forty-five seconds if you're lucky, and you better have it down to the line at that point, we've done that, too. And then sometimes you're called to testify, our former police chief testified this week on the hazing bill. He gave me a heads up on the thing, too, just letting them know, so.
We all testified, remember one year on stormwater? We all trooped down into there, it's just scary.
And I was there when Joe came forward, trying to be, trying to help on LNI after our fire department got fined. Yeah, so, and it's, it's amazing when you're there, and the firefighters union didn't support, even though it was fine, the fire department, so. One never knows where they're going.
Well, and the other, the evening event is a good networking opportunity.
Yeah, and that's where you take care of your own dinner, and obviously it comes to expenses here. But we usually, she usually finds a place. We've had to change because downtown Olympia has changed dramatically because of the homeless situation there. Some of the really great restaurants have just said, heck with it, and they've just locked the doors and left. So trying to find some hotel or restaurants downtown is a challenge right now, so.
In my experience, when I was on the west side, it was much more convenient to get over there, so I would go down on a different day than AWC for other items, for those lobbying efforts, and I was usually able to get a lot of meetings with a lot of different people, but during the AWC time, usually the delegations are taking up a lot of time, but people do have some, some openings if we can call and check. If there's somebody identified.
And I think just from a learning standpoint, oftentimes in the concurrent sessions, there will be panel discussions, which are really valuable, and made up of sometimes with a legislator or two, council members, mayors from other communities, and you just learn so much about what those communities are doing as it relates to what we're doing. And you don't always have to reinvent the wheel kind of thing, so I've always found those sessions to be really interesting. And this says, talk to your lobbyists, but the lobbyists usually have a session. And when I talk about lobbyists, I'm talking about the AWC lobbyists, and, you know, they certainly are covering the things that are in their legislative priorities, which match a couple of areas of ours, and so I think those are really valuable things.
And AWC has a Legislative Priorities Committee, which I've been serving on, and you only have a certain length of time you do that, I think it's like two years. And then every time AWC says there's a chance to volunteer for committees, always look at that and double-check, because you can sign up for those, so, yeah.
Also, the education advisory, like the mayor was talking about, is, I believe, looking for people, they sent out a notice. So that was one I sent, yeah, that was one I served on. I did want to clarify also, I've been talking with Mike. I am planning on going, however, due to some family stuff, it's up in the air, but the reason I bring that up is because I've been in contact with the representatives on a separate matter, having to do with veterans, and so it doesn't have to do with anything with the city. So just in case that ends up coming up, so, yeah.
On a similar note to that, Megan, if you're still considering this, what I did pass on to Nathan when he brought it up, is I can still get full refunds on the hotels if you let me know by the end of the month that you will not be attending.
Okay, so do we have our marching orders? I think we do.
Yeah, I feel real, real comfortable, and thank you for the, pointing me towards the mayor of Fairfield for the dinner, that'll, that'll pick up the pace on a few things, and, yeah, we'll get after it.
She's been council member, she's been mayor, she's been council member, she's been off, she's, I think she's, is she the mayor now?
She is.
Okay, yeah.
And she's all, and she's also.
On the board from AWC.
And her house burned down.
Mickey's?
Wasn't Mickey one of the ones whose house burned down?
No, she's working in Malden.
She works in a different city.
But she, yeah, she's working in Malden now.
She was like an assistant planner at Spokane Valley.
Planner, exactly.
Okay.
And Fairfield is kind of by the Coeur d'Alene Casino.
Yeah, yeah.
You just go, as you're going north, Casino is that way, Fairfield is that way, you take the same.
So talking to her is a gamble, so other than that, yeah. So we've got everything covered, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Moving second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, eight oh two.